Okay, let's call to order the regular business meeting for the Board of Education for Monday, May 21st. If I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
................................................
Alright, good evening and welcome everybody. Roll call please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Jack Groody.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Hoover.
Here.
Scott Moose.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Mac Thurman.
Okay, we welcome Lisa Hassel to her first official board meeting. Glad to have you here.
Glad to be here.
We'll come down, I'll come down.
Okay.
Okay, so let's do the agenda. We'll have, we'll open it up for public comment here in the beginning. Anybody who would like to address the board is welcome to do so. I'd ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less. We will have substantial student recognition, 'tis the season. We will honor our outgoing school board representatives and welcome in our new school board representatives, student school board representatives, and then get the student school board reps. We've got an extensive superintendent's report covering a number of important items. We will approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed a week ago. We've got brief updates, actually not so brief updates, from program personnel and facilities and finance. No property, seat all, little seat all update, I A S B? Jim? Nothing? Okay. And then we will convene an executive session this evening to review collective negotiating matters. That's five ILCS 120/2C2. We will not be taking any action following that executive session. Alright, any questions before we start? Alright, so we will move on to public comment. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? You're all so quiet. Okay, seeing done, we'll move on to our student recognition for the night. Who's first?
Alrighty. Might need a fourth.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good problem, yeah.
Student recognitions.
Alright, well, good evening. I am Tom Klennis, principal of Libertyville High School, and very proud to recognize two separate groups of students today. And what's really cool about Libertyville High School is that we not only celebrate teams, that are athletic teams, when they accomplish great things, but we celebrate our fine arts teams and our co-curricular, extracurricular, co-curric-, our extracurricular teams, co-curricular, extracurricular. That's, that's all mouthful. But our, we had a big parade last week with our marching band taking both of these groups of students through the school to celebrate some extraordinary accomplishments. So we're gonna start with our math team, who took second place in the state of Illinois at the big competition. And here tonight to represent them is their coach, Rick Brenner. Rick, come on over. And... (applause) Coach Lisa Davis is here, and Coach Tammy Rendy is here. (applause) Well, I'm gonna let them tell you a little bit about the competition, and then you'll call your students up, and we'll present them their, their certificates.
Yes. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the board for recognizing us tonight. We had a really good run for state at regionals. We were, I think, fourth. Does that sound right? And the kids practiced really hard and put in extra time, and then we came home second. We were really pleased with that this year. A really good group of kids, and we will announce them. I believe Dr. K. is gonna hand them a certificate. You can come forward. I don't know who's here and who's not here, so I'll just read all of the names. Some of them will be in absentia. Is that okay?
That's good. They're studying for finals, probably.
Yes, could be. Alright, here we go. Daniel Shimon, Aaron Chen, Allison Chu, Tara D'Souza, Jake Duffy, Lily Irvine, Samantha Fan, Mitch Gifford, Albert Wong, John He, Brian Hong, Matthew Wong, Sam Herr, Sebastian Inghino, Alex G., Ben John, Nathan John, Noah Kublank, Katie Lund, Luke Marcusson, Desi Nainer, Matthew Newberger, Suraj Rajendran, Seveka Sembian, Matt Shinick, Maggie Schutz, Ian Smith, Charles Stanke, Liam Tucker, Lawrence Wang, Louis Wang, Richard Chau.
Still doing challenges, so we'll shake hands. Shakes a few hands, congratulations, all of you. Congratulations.
Doctor Lee.
Thank you, Doctor.
Oh, yeah, there he is.
Just come on.
We're gonna take our picture.
Come on over, guys, we're taking a picture.
Deliver those tomorrow and serve.
So we'll try to, like, condense a little bit together. We wanna make sure that we can see our faces. That's right. Okay? Ready? Turn here. Okay, did you get everything you need? Okay, great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is. There it is. This is a pump stop, so we wanna take our time. Okay, great. Good job.
Thank you.
So if you guys hold on for, you can come back here to the audience, and we're gonna bring up now our Super State Honor Band Selectee, our Wind Ensemble, and their director, their coach, their conductor, their spiritual advisor, Mr. Adam Gore.
(applause)
I'm gonna let Adam explain to you the Wind Ensemble's accomplishments, but I would just say this, if music was a contact sport, we would be state champions, so congratulations.
Thankfully, it's not, but I do have to undergo concussion protocol training at the start of the year for marching bands, so. So Super State is a festival hosted annually by the University of Illinois for about 45 years now. About 150 bands audition in different classes, and they accept six down there, and then a panel of collegiate judges selects an honor band. This is the 10th time that LHS has been selected. My predecessor did a fabulous job of representing down there as well. And before we call the names, a special shout out to my math team colleagues, particularly Lisa and Tammy, because half dozen of these kids have the same, you'll notice a half dozen of the same faces come up here, and they actually ran the kids from our performance over to the math team, which happened to thankfully both be in champagne at the time, which is great. But they were really, really great working with us, so these kids could have both experiences, and as it turns out, successfully for both, which was phenomenal. So, thank you. And here we go. There's, there's a few names. There's like 50 of us. Alright, Elias Anderson.
Yeah.
Nick Berklin.
Julian Bach.
Audrey Chung.
Tate Constable.
Alex Dekelski.
Jacob Dekelski.
Lauren Gadek.
Beck Gantus.
Meredith Golden.
Jackson Gover.
Eloise Hines.
Sebastian Inghino.
Melissa G.
Ben Johnson.
Henry Coulterman.
Noah Kublank.
Melissa Leroy.
David Lee.
Erin Lees.
George Legan.
Ainsley Lowndsbury.
Maddie Main.
Melissa Manich.
Chris Martin.
Julia McGormly.
John McGuann.
Julia Mullenhauer.
Victoria Moy.
Amanda Murbot.
Ian Nagel.
Claire Newberger.
Matthew Newberger.
Katherine Olson.
Matthew Olson.
Eileen Rice.
Kes Rogers.
Kate Rollick.
Emily Roller.
Richie Rush.
Matt Sleet.
Carter Smith.
Ian Smith.
C.C. Snyder.
Ava Zettner.
Kirsten Townander.
Nora Tucker.
Spencer Vang.
And Annalisa Wannick.
Sorry, one more comment. We do share a lot of kids, and our competition begins downstairs at 9:00 a.m. So what time did the band have to leave to get there for our competition at 9:00 a.m.? So I wanna say thank you to them for doing that for us.
And we have to kinda squeeze together, shoulders, shoulders. And then... Just to show you how multi-dimensional these students are, we also have Melissa Manich is here, and she's back from taking fifth in the state of Illinois girls track meet. Not only did she take fifth, which earns her All-State, she set the school record in her event, which, the 3200? 3200, she ran it in 2 minutes and 22 seconds, correct?
No.
How long's your time?
39, 10 minutes and 30 seconds.
10 minutes and 39 seconds. Yeah. Congratulations, Melissa. Okay, I think that's it for the LHS awards. I don't know, John, do you have any today for Vernon Hills? It's a great day to be a Wildcat. Alright, before you all leave, a couple of things, 'cause you thought you were gonna be able to leave now. Okay, so now we go into the second, no, I missed one. Here's what I wanna tell you. My name is Klennis Lee, and I'm the superintendent, if we have not had the opportunity to meet before. But this is our favorite thing to do, is celebrate our students being successful at whatever they do and wherever they do it. And students, phenomenal. It's impressive, incredibly blessed to have you here as students at both of our high schools. But we also wanna acknowledge tonight that you've had a lot of support along the way, and a lot of good teaching at home, and a lot of parents who have made a lot of sacrifices for you to be where you're at tonight. So here's what we'd like to do. We'd like to have all the parents and any family and friends that are here, of these outstanding young people, we'd like you to stand up and let us give you a round of applause. Okay? Now, here we're kind of up here. That's a good, they're wonderful, right? Okay, we're gonna ask one other thing before we let you, of course, you can stay for the rest of the meeting if you want, okay? Before we let you exit, we are, we have seated a new board member in the last few weeks, and Dr. Groody just wants to take a minute to introduce her to you, and a little bit about her, and then we'd like to give her a big 128 welcome to the school board, okay? So Pat?
Okay, so at a special meeting that was held on April 30th, the Community High School District 128 Board of Education voted unanimously to appoint Lisa Hassel to the Board of Education. Lisa will fill a position vacated following the recent resignation of Ellen Maurer, and her position will last approximately 11 months until the next election. She was selected from an outstanding field of 15 applicants and multiple interviews. We narrowed that list down to five, and then after a very thorough process, actually, we were really thrilled to welcome Lisa onto the team here. Lisa's a Vernon Hills resident, a parent of a Vernon Hills sophomore. She's an active volunteer both at the high school as well as the District 120, District 73. She is an avid reader and enjoys traveling with her husband. She's got an extensive background in human resources, most recently as Director of Talent Management at GCG Financial. She's currently a student, correct? No?
No. I'm on high, extended hiatus.
See, it's a busy job. She's, but anyway, she has worked towards her MBA from DePaul, and she also holds a bachelor's in broadcast journalism from the University of Illinois Urban Champagne. So Lisa, we're thrilled to have you join the team. We look forward to working with you and putting a lot of those very useful skills to work for us. So thank you very much for coming.
If you'd like to leave, this would be the time to do that, okay? Hey.
student school board representatives. This past year, we've had six students, three from each high school, do an absolutely outstanding job of representing the students and making sure that we as board members get firsthand perspective directly from the students. And it's been a busy year, and actually, this group of six people is an extremely busy group of people, not only working here on the school board, but I know a number of them are involved in an awful lot of additional extracurricular activities. So we certainly thank you for all of your hard work and commitment to the board. We've been extremely interested in your perspectives and the things that you've shared with us. You've done a fantastic job. Every year, I always think that was the best group yet, and you didn't disappoint. So, great job, and we wish all of you, I know all of you have exciting things going on next year. We wish you the very, very best, and certainly hope you take a little bit of that Wildcat and Cougar spirit with you wherever you go. So we do have a small plaque that we would like to share with each of you. I can read it. The Community High School District 128 Board of Education extends a special thank you to you for your service as the 2017-2018 LHS or VHHS student representative to the board. Your dedication on behalf of your fellow students has enhanced the communication and understanding of issues between the student and the board members, and again, we thank you for all of your input. So if I could ask Zachary Ford to come forward. Actually, from Libertyville, we have Zachary Ford. We have Eleanor Daly and Lola Ackerman.
Madison Curber.
Madison Curber, okay.
You're looking through this.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. So there's Zach.
Okay, Zach, congratulations. Come over here, I'm sure you can get in on a picture. Alright. Alright, let's go. Get a picture of her, and then we'll take a picture.
Didn't have to cross it out, right?
Congratulations. Good job. Thank you. Okay, we have, there's Kelsey's in front.
Alright, I won't take a picture of more of yous.
Okay, so yeah, let's do well with Vernon Hills, and then we'll do a group shot, okay? Yeah, let's do a group shot. Spread out a little bit. Alright. Thank you guys. These are scenes for the music. So, yeah. So, yeah, 'cause I bring camera. I don't have a camera.
from 2017 and 18, we also wanna welcome our new student school board representatives from Libertyville High School, Catherine Corless. Welcome, Catherine. Zachary Elgadit. Did you get that right? Okay. And Matthew Wang. Okay, and then from Vernon Hills High School, Caitlin Dohler. Brandon Kim. And Taylor Vaughn.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Alright, get another shot, you're losing your picture taken. Alright, I think we can probably, if you guys will step back a little bit, we can spread out just a little bit more. Okay, can you fit in there, Dr. G? Why don't you come towards, why don't you guys slide toward me? Okay, there we go.
Jesse.
Great. Alright, wonderful.
Alright, not so fast. Over there on the right side. One last time, okay? Let's hear about all the wonderful things happening at the conclusion of the school year. You would like to go first?
Alright, so on behalf of the three of us, we just wanna start out saying that we'd like, we sincerely like to thank you for this amazing opportunity. The opportunity to see how decisions are made regarding school decisions and education was extremely insightful, and we thank you for recognizing the importance of student voices in our community. To start out with LHS news, we had Week Day on April 25th, and some of the LHS students and staff participated on this day at All-State Arena to celebrate the service they have done and given back to the community. So students got to hear speeches, and musicians, and leaders of the community to focus on the importance of giving back and persevering through obstacles in order to help others. German classes, they got to hear Eiger Pak, a consulate from the Turkish Embassy in Chicago, and he spoke to German classes about his story, as well as the history and current state of German-Turkish relation. And this was relevant because Turkey, it has the largest immigrant population in Germany. It make up about 5%. So it was just a great opportunity for them to hear some real-life situations. And then, we had our annual art show on May 3rd and 4th, so LHS students got to showcase their art pieces that they had made throughout the year. And then on the evening of May 3rd, there was also a silent auction. Our math team, as noted previously, got second place in state on May 5th. Special note of Desi Nain and John He, because they were the state champions in the two-person event, which was very exciting. For, we have a group called FCCLA, which is the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, and they had a major success at their state competition. Sam Otto earned a silver medal for his roller tray, and Eliza Debinsky earned her gold medal for her fashion apparel display, as well as most outstanding in her competition, meaning that she had one of the highest scores in the state, which is obviously very impressive. And then lastly for me, is that our bass fishing team, composed of Joey Bissing and Jackson Patton, won the sectional tournament on Monday, May 7th, and they just competed at state this past weekend to end off their season.
Alright, so Interact Club, as many of you know, works very hard throughout the school year on different community outreach programs, and just giving back to the community in pretty magnificent ways. So at the end of the year here, they received a grant from Libertyville Sunrise Rotary Club for future projects due to their service within the community. As a graduating senior program sponsored by U.S. Figure Skating, LHS senior Sophia Pearson earned a gold level distinction for accomplishments in figure skating over the year, including her participation in three sectional competitions and two national competitions. LHS Wind Ensemble, like we recognized, the highest level band at LHS, won Super State on May 5th at U of I. Today at LHS, LHS had food trucks outside the school by the band doors, and all proceeds from these food trucks went to the Why Not Project, honoring Tony Borsho, who passed away in 2017. And the Why Not Project raises funds and awareness for Boney Under the Influence. I was out at the food trucks today, and in spite of the rain, all the students had such a great time. I personally enjoyed the grilled cheese with mac and cheese inside of it. It was quite a treat. So it was just a great way to kinda wrap up the final day here before heading into week of finals. LHS students Olivia Cherry, Ian Cox, Reese Danifal, and Anna Legatke received honors for their writing from the National Council of Teachers of English. Cherry and Legatke received certificates of superior writing, and Danifal received a certificate of nomination. Furthermore, Legatke was admitted to the High School Arts Week at Rackdale, which is a nonprofit artist community. The King &amp; I, which LHS Theater Department produces as her fall musical, was nominated for Best Production by Illinois High School Musical Theater Awards. In addition to Best Production, the show also received nominations for Best Director by Christopher Thomas, and Best Actress for Alex Everett-Brown. The whole cast will be celebrated at the ceremony on June 4th at the Broadway Playhouse in Chicago.
Alright, so as previously noted, LHS had seven members head to state this past weekend. Specifically, Melissa Manich received fifth place as state in the second, or the two-mile with a record of 10:39. In soccer, the girl soccer team was regional state champions this past weekend. And then in volleyball, the team won the NSC Conference Title last week and are working towards state now. The team will play their first regional match tomorrow in Rockford. And then cabaret, so May 2nd was Choir's Cabaret Concert in the auditorium, so various students were able to showcase their talents at LHS' traditional show. And then, May 10th was the Orchestis Show, in which various dancers were able to showcase their creative dance talents. And then, May 15th was the Seniors Honors Night, and multiple LHS students were given awards as well as scholarships for their work over the past four years at LHS.
For Vernon Hills, today was our Seniors Honor Ensemble, and seniors were recognized for all of their achievements. This wasn't, oh, oh. Sorry.
So it was just a great way to kind of wrap up the final day here before heading into week of finals. LHS students Olivia Cherry, Ian Cox, Reese Danifel and Anna Legutti received honors for their writing from the National Council of Teachers of English. Cherry and Legutti received certificates of superior writing, and Danifel received a certificate of nomination. Furthermore, Legutti was admitted to the High School Arts Week at Ragdale, which is a nonprofit artist community. The King &amp; I, which LHS Theater Department produces or fall musical, was nominated for Best Production by Illinois High School Musical Theater Awards. In addition to Best Production, the show also received nominations for Best Director by Christopher Thomas and Best Actress for Alex Everett-Brown. The whole cast will be celebrated at the ceremony on June 4th at the Broadway Playhouse in Chicago.
Alright, so as previously noted, LHS had seven members head to state this past weekend. Specifically, Melissa Manisch received fifth place as state in the second, or the two-mile, with a record of 10:39. In soccer, the girls' soccer team was regional state champions this past weekend. And then in volleyball, the team won the NSC Conference Title last week and are working towards state now. The team will play their first regional match tomorrow in Rockford. And then cabaret, so May 2nd was Choir's Cabaret Concert in the Auditorium. So various students were able to showcase their talents at LHS traditional show. And then May 10th was the Orchestis Show, in which various dancers were able to showcase their creative dance talents. And then May 15th was the Seniors Honors Night, and multiple LHS students were given awards as well as scholarships for their work over the past four years at LHS.
For Vernon Hills, today was our seniors' honor assembly, and seniors were recognized for all of their achievements. This wasn't, oh, oh. Sorry. This was an all-school assembly, which is unique in the way that the school shows the rest of the student body the accomplishments of their seniors and not just the senior class, and what they should strive to work for, whether they're freshmen, junior, or sophomore. Then special recognition to Tatiana Glavsky and Alexa Viviana, who raised money for Meditation Garden that was finished last week. So the courtyard addition includes a bench, wind chimes, a fountain, birdbath, and what was that? Trails? Abby Hans made it to state in the 3A sectional trap meet for pole vaulting. She competed at Eastern Illinois University this past weekend, and she did a great job. Was happy with her results. For boys track, Tyler Gonzalez is going to state in the 400. Patrick Seer is also going to state for pole vault. The D-128 Difference Maker Project recognition ceremony occurred last weekend, last week, where 10 students' projects were honored for honoring multiple people in our community who have made a lasting impact in the lives of others. We'd also like to take a moment to recognize the staff members who are retiring this year. Thank you for all of your years of dedication to our school and district. That's Ms. Day, Ms. Ballinger, Ms. Smithheiser, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kaisel, Ms. Et, and Ms. Ettna is not retired, but she is of the Science Department, moving away with her family to Seattle. The Student Diversity Council did an interfaith panel, which community members from different religious backgrounds answered questions from students to look at the way that we are all different yet the same. And we did this event under our mission of VH unite. Congratulations to the following students who earned a perfect ACT score, Rachel Chung, Alexa Pomerantz, Patrick Seer, Maximus Su, and Alex Ying. Also, congratulations to Stephanie Freikels, Kevin and Jen Phelan, and the cast and crew of Radiant Girls. All their performances were excellent, with closing night nearing a sellout. One community member, seeing a VHS performance for the first time, described the show as nothing short of professional quality. The Orchestis Company also performed their amazing show called Empowered, and as always, the quality and coordination of this event was inspiring. Members of VH Media received honors in the 25th Annual Midwest Media Educators Association Awards held April 27th at Neco Valley High School. The team received first place in the commercial category and second place in music. Mrs. Martin is the advisor to VH Media. The VHS Interact Club was recently selected by the Chick-Foley Foundation to receive a micro grant of $250, and Interact uses grand money to aid with their impact project. Students made fleece blankets that will be donated to children and their families staying at the Ronald McDonald House. Several VHS FCC LA members earned honors for their outstanding performances at the state competition in Springfield on April 13th, and they were coached by Mrs. Schwartz and Mrs. White-Scarper.
Okay, so we had our first ever CrossFit Open Challenge for Vernon Hills High School students, and this is a nationwide competition that a lot of students in our CrossFit classes participated in. And Philip Swanson finished 2,538th out of 3,101 in the male team division, and his best finish was 2,016th on one of the workouts named 18.4. Emma McGreevy finished 1,879th out of 2,350th in the female team division, and her best finish was 1,379th in the workout 18.3. Girls' soccer recently won regionals against Antioch and plays in the sectional semifinal tomorrow against Wakanda. So best of luck to the soccer team, and Francis is the captain, so that's a lot to her too. Grace Lim, Pramav Goel, and Maddie Fernandez did an outstanding job speaking at the Sugarman World Languages Achievement Awards a couple of weeks ago, and we got to hear their perspectives on their journeys and experiences through language, which was really cool. Congratulations to Junior Cecilia Gao, who was elected by her peers to serve as Lieutenant Governor of the Junior State of America Midwest Region. And this is a huge accomplishment for Cece because she'll help lead the nation's largest student-run organization that builds young leaders to be active citizens in our democracy. Congratulations to our 16 recipients of the You Make a Difference Award winners, Mary Childers, Karen Clark, Matt Clifford, Andy Compton, Karen Day, Shannon Etmyer, Stephanie Freikels, Myra Liedhymas, Heather Larson, Deb Lehman, Sandy Martin, Liz Peterson, Fred Preiser, Chris Rivas, and Jane Wenzel. And then Abby, Frances said earlier is going to state. Congratulations to our math team, who placed fifth at state, which was really awesome. And then congratulations to the students that made it to state for their work in the Chicago Metro History Fair. And then we also want to say congratulations to our new board reps, Caitlin, Brandon, and Taylor. And also, we just want to thank the board for the opportunity that we had to serve. We learned a lot about speaking and gained a lot of confidence and leadership skills, and we also gained three new friends from across Milwaukee, so that was really cool. So thank you.
Great, great job. How about, real quick, just go down the table and share with us what your plans are next year?
Yeah, so I am going to be studying international relations at Pepperdine University.
I'm double majoring in psychology and journalism and minoring in film at USC.
Is there some attraction to the West Coast?
Fortunately enough, I'm going to Hope College in Holland, Michigan, and I think about majoring in international business or psychology, not sure.
I'm studying operations and management in the Business School at University of Wisconsin-Madison.
I'll be studying international relations at Stanford University.
I'll be studying business at University of Illinois and Urbana.
Okay, just great job by all of you guys. Alright, Superintendent's Report.
Well, and Dr. Gruddy, we might mention that we have the pleasure of eating lunch at Baker Square once a month. We being Dr. Gruddy, myself, and Dr. Gilliam, and Dr. Calentus, and our six student board reps. And I think they like the pie there too, which is, which is always good, but the conversation and catching up with them is invaluable for all of us. You know, in addition to just being really cool to kind of hang out with them for, you know, for an hour and a half once a month, but having the opportunity to talk with them and really get a student perspective on things is really helpful. So we are certainly going to miss all of you, and we welcome all of you next year, and we're looking forward to hanging out with you and hearing from you next year as well, okay? So congratulations to all of you again. Okay, I know you'll find this hard to believe, but I have three pages of additional good news. So it's that time of year, and this is always the fun stuff, so we'll kind of work our way through this. District 128 is pleased to announce that LHS and VHS ranked 12th and 15th in the state of Illinois, and the 2018 US News &amp; Globe Report Best High School Rankings released earlier this month. The rankings award the top 5,948 public high schools with gold, silver, and bronze medals, indicating their level of college readiness. LHS received a gold medal award, and VHS received a silver medal. The LHS and VHS national rankings were 447 and 640 respectively, placing them in the top 3% of all the nation's 25,813 high schools reviewed. Only 182 of Illinois' 617 high schools made the rankings. So congratulations to everyone. On May 17th, thanks to the work of the LHS and VHS Junior US History Students, D-128 was able to celebrate the stories of those receiving honors in the Second Annual D-128 Difference Makers Program. Difference Maker Program began in 2016-17. D-128 Social Studies teachers Amanda Carroll from VHS and Sarah Greenswag from LHS collaborated on the development of the project as a way to bring project-based learning to their classrooms that would provide students with an opportunity to become local historians. Students researched, interviewed, and created a video about their subject, and the entries were judged by the participating US History classes, with 10 being selected to receive this year's honors. Teachers with classes participating in this year's Difference Maker Project were Amanda Carroll and Paul Friedrich at VHS, and Sarah Greenswag, Mike Manzel, and Christina Dwyer at VHS. This year's recipients and their student researchers were Ruthie Paugh Cottle, Kayla Cottle from VHS, Liz Howard and Taylor Heimer, LHS, Susan Daniel, Jake Olive, VHS, Joseph DeCarra and Marissa DeLeon, VHS, Dave and Maddie McInnery, Clarice Austin and Jack Marakoka, Kelly Cotter and Cassandra Papano and Julie Neri at VHS, Alex and Karimar Brown, Joseph Reyes and Francis Gorman, VHS, Nick Beilich, Sidney Donovan, LHS, Elizabeth Ray, Peyton Mikowski, and Samantha Gifford, VHS, Gilfan, VHS, and Sue Ching, Lehor, Sneaka Akarati, and Ria Wilkowski, VHS. Learn more about this year's difference makers on D-128 social media in the coming weeks. At the American Association of Teachers of German Awards Ceremony held April 29th at the College of the Page, D-128 German teacher Alex Kurtz received a Kleck Langen Smith Award in recognition for outstanding accomplishments in the teaching of German. He received the award based on his students' outstanding performance in national competition. We already mentioned the LHS math team finished second in the state this year, and the VHS math team finished fifth in the state competition held at the University of Illinois. So congratulations to VHS as well. At the Area Spring Special Olympics Games held recently at Lake Zurich High School, District 128 athletes took to the track, hoping to win gold and qualify for the state summer games. When the dust settled, they had won 21 medals and three ribbons, and six athletes qualified for state. Mallory Marvin, Charlie Helperon, Vinnie Roberts, Joseph Mahler, Drew McCarthy, and Chris Marosen all qualified for the summer games. They will join Hope Michelotti, Anna Scholler, Kristy Rose, and Alexa Donato, who qualified for state in bocce ball earlier in the year, Tristan Hildago, who will be competing in gymnastics, and Shaw Karanen, who will be competing in swimming. Also in Special Olympics news, Anna Scholler and Alexa Donato were chosen to play on the Team USA Illinois Soccer Team that will be competing at the Soccer Cup, which is part of the 50th anniversary celebration in Chicago this July. And our Special Olympians continue to do an amazing job. And in fact, before the meeting tonight, a group of us were able to be down at their year-end Special Olympics awards down in the gymnastics gym here, and really, really exciting to be with the students and the coaches and their parents. So congratulations to all of them. Retired LHS Band Director Don Shute, and retired VHS Orchestra Director and Fine Arts Chair Frank Listino received honorary doctorate degrees from Vandercoot College of Music at the school's graduation on May 11th. Three LHS students are in recognition from the National Council of Teachers of English for their exceptional writing. Juniors Olivia Cherry and Anna Legutti will receive certificates of superior writing, and Junior Reese Dannenfeld will receive a certificate of nomination. National judges evaluated each piece of writing for expression of ideas, language use, and unique perspective. In addition, Junior Reese Dannenfeld and sophomore Ian Cox earned recognition from the Illinois Association of Teachers of English for their exceptional writing. And Junior Anna Legutti has been admitted to the High School Arts Week at Ragdale Nonprofit Artist Community for the second year in a row. Four District 128 students received honors at the May 6th award ceremony conducted by the Illinois Council for Exceptional Children, North Suburban Chapter 336, as part of the Exceptional Children's Week Celebration. Those receiving honors were Anna Scholler, Best I Can Be Award, nominated by Susan Price, LHS Special Services Teacher. Alex Quende, Yes I Can Award, nominated by Karen Martin, VHS/CDAW Project Search Teacher. Alexa Donato, Yes I Can Award, nominated by Susan Price, LHS Special Services Teacher. And Hans Keith, Yes I Can Award, nominated by Karen Martin, VHS CDAW Project Search Teacher. LHS Department Secretary Irene Konstantinidis and D-128 Director of Community Education, Anne Grant-Stannen Phillips, received awards of excellence at the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, INSRA, distinguished service awards luncheon held May 11th in Boeing Run. The awards program recognizes individuals and groups for their efforts to support public education throughout Illinois. Projects by 11 VHS juniors qualified to advance to the Illinois State History Fair held May 3 in Springfield. VHS students competed in the following areas. In exhibits, David Leschiner, Thomas Florian, Jackson Kiznick, Victor Kamacho. Research paper, Ben Gorashenko. And websites, Madeline Woodrow, Rachel Chung, Alice Jean, Alex Pomerantz, Ria Sabraminan, and Jawan Lee. Ben Gorashenko received two awards for his paper on the Lincoln Douglas Debates. He won awards from the Lincoln Foundation and the Lincoln Association, and each included a cash prize. Members of VH Media received honors in the 25th Annual Midwest Media Educators Association Awards held April 27th at Neco Valley High School. The team received first place in the commercial category and second place in music. Sandy Martin is the advisor to VH Media. And the LHS teachers, Loretta O'Day and Kristen Tarrant, traveled to Springfield with students for the FCC LA state competition. Sam Otto competed in relish tray and earned a silver medal. Eliza Debinsky competed in fashion apparel display and earned a gold medal. Eliza also earned most outstanding in her competition, which means she had one of the highest scores in all of Illinois. And before we close good news tonight, I want to make a special comment of just the outstanding senior recognition assemblies that we've had at both schools. At Libertyville, their tradition is to do it, have their program in the evening, very well attended, a number of community supporters who contribute scholarships to that program. The tradition at Vernon Hills is to have an all-school assembly during the day, which they did today, and again, really marvelous to see our students recognized. And thanks to John and his team, and Tom and their teams for the, just the outstanding work that they do in preparing those programs and making them happen, because they are very special. So thanks, guys, to you and your teams. Okay, unless someone else has some good news that we missed? Any of you guys? Okay, anybody else? Okay, that's probably enough for me right now, right? Next on the Superintendent's Report tonight is school start time. And we just want to remind the community again, as we have been updating the community for a number of months here at the board meeting, and also in EPA Prince, that Representative District Stakeholder, Team of Teachers, Administrator Staff, and Students and Parents presented a thorough review of their work on potential start times for next year to the Board of Education earlier in the year. Based on that work, the group presented recommendations to the board and the administration. The district administration made a final recommendation for a later start time next year to the board, and the board endorsed that recommendation. As I have been noting at several recent board and board committee meetings and in EPA Prince, important components regarding the recommended start time schedule are subject to and part of the overall collective bargaining process, which is currently ongoing. When agreement is reached with the teachers' union on this contractual issue, it will become part of the larger final bargaining agreement. The union continues to participate in those discussions. So that's our update right now on school start time. Okay, next on the Superintendent's Report is LHS Pool Project Update. Dan, what wisdom did Mark pass on to you?
The pool is still currently under construction. There's water in the pool.
It goes swimming.
Yeah, so they're, they're still working on the foundations and everything, and so looking to get the steel ready up in the next couple of months here, so. So at this point, we're still on budget and on schedule for spring next year, so.
Okay, that's good. And in a related topic, many folks know that we have been working on additional parking in LHS High School as part of the pool and the property development. This evening, Board Member Scott Luce and Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly and Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mark Koopman, along with District Architect and Engineer, were presenting that parking plan that we've discussed a number of times with the board in both committee meetings and at the board meetings. And Scott just sent me a text and said that the Appearance Review Committee has approved their part of the plan, so all next, move to the next level at the Village moving forward. And that is going to provide an additional 69-ish parking spaces on the west side of the campus as we develop that part of the property. And that is in addition to... And that is in addition to the 40 parking spots that are currently nonusable as part of the construction. That parking lot no longer exists. That will be replaced. So that will help our parking problem at Libertyville greatly in the future years. So that's good news to report out, and I think Scott and maybe Bryant are on their way back. So that's great to report out. Okay, number four in the superintendent's report. Bo, can you drop the screen for us? I just want to take a couple of minutes. The board has seen this and heard me talk about this several times over the years, and so the public probably has as well. But I just want to do a bit of a review for the board tonight. Over the last three years, from FY '16 through next year, we have strategically and decisively worked on a plan to review what we were trying to accomplish and needed to accomplish with our workforce at the district level, and then utilize attrition for people that might be leaving the district to take other positions or retiring to make some administrative and staff, support staff reductions. So if you'll look up here, you will note in the salary columns, we have eliminated five district-level positions. That is about 20% of the district-level workforce. That has yielded roughly $463,500 in salary and reduced benefits, roughly $85,826, for a total savings of $549,000. And that's a significant amount of money. And assignment redistributions to date from the first rounds of cutbacks we did, we did need to reassign some of those and redistribute some of those, that workload. We used approximately $29,000 to do that. So total savings at this point is in the neighborhood of $520,000. Again, a reduction of about 20% of our workforce done by looking at what we were trying to drive and we needed to accomplish at district office, and then using attrition and retirements to be able to leverage that moving forward. Now, as we move forward, we are going to have to redistribute some other assignments and will need to use part of those resources to do that. But those will all be kind of part-time work, part-time positions, and so we'll still have significant savings of, you know, easily above $450,000, $475,000 when we're done with those job redistributions. So we want to put that in front of people again today, so there's a knowledge that as we work at district office, our modus operandi and our philosophy is, is we exist to, you know, provide guidance and support to our two high schools. We live and die by what happens in our two buildings. Some of our current board members who were on the board several years ago remember a couple of years ago, we actually started the year with a very, very scary kind of long-term financial profile. And so we talked about, you know, doing some cuts within the district and seeing where we could save money. We really ended up choosing to address some of those structural issues in this way, and we think it's significant, and I will tell you at this point, there's no more to be had there. Okay, as you might imagine, with the 20% reduction of the staff, we've gone as far as we can go, and we've only been able to do that because of the quality of people that we have at district office and their willingness to kind of go way over and above to make this happen. But it's significant because with the uncertainty at the state and some of the other issues, before we ever turned to the building, we know that we've taken a half a million dollars in savings that didn't ultimately have to be taken from the building or programs in the building. So again, just wanted to show that for the benefit really of our community, to put it in a document where everyone could see that. So happy to answer any questions about that or any comments that you might have on that.
Good, thank you.
Okay. All right, next, IASB dues every year about this time. We have to pay our dues for the Illinois Association of School Boards. This district has been a active member in IASB for a very long time. Jim really serves as our board liaison to the IASB and does a great job of that. So Pat, we are recommending that we approve our dues for next year for IASB with a total of $10,115.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the payment of the IASB membership fee in the amount of $10,115?
I move to approve the membership fees.
All right, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Batsen.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Can I vote?
Scott has entered the room. You can now vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Lundstedt, aye. Thurman.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Scott, before we move on, we just did a quick update that the plan was approved. You want to give us an update, you and Bryant?
It was not eventful. We had a few questions as it related, just to some of the lighting, what were the lighting, what were some of the plants? Just questions on understanding what we were trying to do, and that was, Bryant, that was about it, correct?
Yeah, correct. So the ARC committee approved it to move on to the plan commission.
Thank you.
Just a question, and that included the lands, did they take a position on the landscape to be provided versus like a fence of that nature? Okay, we're not in that level of detail yet, but.
Because our, I guess, you know, the plan that we proposed tonight had the landscaping.
Yeah, I mean, they're okay. Great.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you for going over there tonight. Okay, next, the superintendent's report is Lake County Indemnification Agreement. And Dan, you want to give us a little background on that?
Sure, this is an annual agreement that many districts in Lake County do, what Lake County, the county government. So as you have property that's developed in the different municipalities, so in Vernon Hills or in Libertyville, each municipality has their own rules about developers. So when you build, what money or contributions do they have to give to the schools or for the public good? But as you can see in our district boundaries, there's unincorporated portions, and so what happens when those get developed? Well, that falls under the jurisdiction of the county, and so the county says, well, listen, we'll withhold the permits for whoever's building until we get proof that they've paid you essentially, or you've come to some type of agreement. In order for them to do that, we have to pass this annual resolution, basically saying, the Lake County says, we'll hold them up if you want to do an agreement, but if something happens, you're all going to hold the county, you're going to identify the county for it, which is a very common, very typical thing, so it's pretty straightforward.
So we would recommend your approval of the Lake County Indemnification Agreement.
Correct. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Lake County Indemnification Agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Just a question, it's been approved by the attorney, one of the attorneys, some attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The language hasn't really changed much here over here, so very minor changes. I think there was a word misspelled maybe this year.
Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Not, roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen. Okay, next on the superintendent's agenda tonight is 2018-19 amended committee meeting and board meeting schedule. We changed one date on here in deference to one of the Jewish holidays. So in September, we moved our FNF and PNP committee meetings from Monday, September 10th to Monday, September 17th. So in September, we'll go back-to-back and then the board meeting will be on the 24th. So, you know, we can continue with our past history here of ensuring that we don't have a conflict with the Jewish holidays with meetings and activities. Okay, so our recommendation would be to approve the amended committee and board meeting schedules.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the recommended board meeting schedules?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And last night on the superintendent's report, we had two freedom of information or a FOIA request since our last meeting on 4:30-18. Anna Dre requested a copy of the LHS Pool Project Site Plan for Parking and also a copy of the most recent survey of the LHS campus property. Bryant Kelly did the follow-up, and we responded prior to the deadline. On 5/1, we received a request from Marcus Namus from ATI Physical Therapy and requested a copy of our current athletic training contract. Bryant Kelly did the follow-up, and again, we responded long in advance of the deadline. And that concludes the FOIA's reports this evening, Pat, and also concludes that third and lengthy superintendent's report.
Could I ask a question for you, Mike?
Yes.
And I want to actually ask, going back to school start time, I want to make sure, again, because it was so long ago, we had a group, a big group, study it, approve it. They said, what, 8:45 to 3:20? Is that right? What time was it?
3:25.
3:25. That was presented to us.
Yes.
We approved it as a board. I believe, right?
I don't think it's a formal board action, did we?
You endorsed it. We endorsed it. Okay, so we endorsed it. So we don't really, as a board, need to do anything else.
Correct.
Now.
That's correct.
So now it's in the, because we've been getting a lot of questions with this one, so now it's in the hands of the board, well, not really, it's in part of the negotiation as Prince alluded to. And just to kind of refresh our memory, why, what has to happen because in length of day or something, just kind of try to put it in simple terms so we understand why it's in this.
Yeah, how is it dependent on collective bargaining?
Right. It goes to working conditions, and in our contract, the periods are defined as 50 minutes. So the biggest piece is the length of the class period. In order to do an 8:45 start and get out at 3:25 and not 3:45 or 4 o'clock, the periods have been reduced a few minutes. And across the whole school year, that reduction is actually pretty minimal when it moves forward. There are a couple of other related pieces. Right now, we have a late start Wednesday, and the teachers do professional learning community, professional development, and curriculum instruction work during that period of time. So in the new schedule, that's flattened out among, you know, the five days of the week. And so that's a change in a current working condition. So that has to be part of the negotiations process. Okay, I think to your, maybe your bigger question, Kevin, to go back to is again, so let's say we reached agreement on that issue. Will we still be able to do it next year because we're bargaining a contract? And technically speaking, all of the issues of the contract, all the individual issues, so let's say salary and retirement, any other things that were normal for the contract and school start time, typically, traditionally, all of those issues have to be resolved under the bigger agreement. And then the union goes through a ratification process or their version of approval, then the board approves the contract, and the entire contract is done. So that is where we find ourselves kind of at this point on that issue.
Okay, yeah, because I, again, I had some people ask me the question, if you all weren't negotiating a contract, and this was year two of a four-year contract, why? Why is it so difficult? And again, as a courtesy, we know that our teachers are working very hard with the board. They are working very hard with the board. But as a courtesy, I think we just need to make sure we all understand, there's nothing more this board needs to do right now. If an agreement is reached with the teachers, we should be able to get late start in, but we are starting.
Yes, that would be correct. And so the answer to your first question is no, the board doesn't need to do anything more right now, and they cannot do anything more right now. It's subject to that broader, you know, negotiation. And, you know, that's a reality of contract negotiations. And I think, Kevin, the other thing you mentioned was, so let's say we were on a four-year contract and we were in the second year, what would happen? Would we wait until, you know, the end of that, you know, the next two years in the contract to do that? And the mechanism for that would be to do something like a memorandum of agreement, you know, in the interim, rather than holding the issue up or waiting on the issue for, you know, two more years of the contract.
No, perfect. Thank you very much.
Reed, did I miss anything there?
No.
Okay.
Okay, good questions.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. The consent vote agenda listed, we reviewed it last week in committee. If I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
I move to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen.
Okay, motion carries.
Program and Personnel Chairperson, Batsen.
First on the agenda.
We presented a list of textbooks for adoption for the coming year. The educators have worked diligently over the last couple of years to revise our textbook adoption scheme with the adoption of the digital learning strategy and the student possession of Chromebooks. We've looked at cost savings through digital editions of textbooks when available. You'll see from the textbook requests that are presented that textbook publishers continue to bundle the hard copy of the text with the digital edition, and there isn't too much savings for foregoing the hardcover of the text. But when it's possible and when it presents the savings, that's the solution that we've adopted to have texts as classroom copies and digital editions for all students to lower costs a bit. We've also extended the textbook adoption window from kind of an automatic five-year renewal to at least six. And many of the texts that you see represented here are being adopted after seven or longer years. So we're proud of the work that each of the departments has done and really carefully analyzing the texts that they request and replace, and we're asking that you approve the adoptions as presented.
So the total here is $189,427.90.
Reed, before we do the approval, and we've, of course, we've all talked about this, leadership team in the district, and we've had some conversation with the board about this too, but if somebody says, well, we're in the digital age, what do we even need textbooks for? You know, which a member of the public might say, well, you know, why do we even need print textbooks anymore?
Right, and I alluded to that answer a little earlier, that certainly many students are very comfortable with digital texts, and some students prefer to use only a digital text. But textbook publishers are continuing to bundle the digital text with the hardcover text, and oftentimes, it doesn't really represent any savings to the district to adopt a digital-only text. And so for convenience of students who some still prefer a hardcover, we either have a classroom set of them or where it doesn't really even make sense to just do the classroom set, we're continuing to use that bundle of the hardcover and the e-edition for students' convenience.
So.
It's also true that some of the digital texts in the social studies area in particular are not very user-friendly and continue to be kind of PDFs that students scroll through rather than as interactive as some of the disciplinary texts have become. So they're very careful in choosing the digital text they adopt, and, you know, when it makes sense and when the resources are optimal for student use to adopt the digital only, but when it really doesn't result in much savings and there are features in the hardcover text that students need, then they adopt the bundle.
And it would be safe to say that the major publishers have not yet made the full transition to electronic and digital. Wouldn't that be a fair statement?
Sure, I think, you know, transitions are in progress, but the cost savings haven't presented themselves yet.
Right.
I wouldn't expect that.
Right.
One of the benefits here, though, is we can stretch it a little longer because the digital versions are constantly being updated, so they're up to date for a longer period of time. So you're basically buying add. period of time, so you're basically buying access to that material for a longer period of time.
Period of six years. And our educators are really adept at finding open educational resources as well, that the number of free online resources that are available to educators continues to grow and that's another way to supplement and lengthen the time that a textbook is used because you're getting the more up to date materials as a free online resource.
My last observation here, those, in several years ago, the state stopped supporting textbook adoptions with resources at the state level. So in our district, we used to get approximately $250,000 every other year for textbook adoptions. So when we talk about locally, you know, more local dollars being required to, you know, kind of run your local public school, that's an example of, you know, something the state used to do regularly and had to do that as a financial cutback in the state. So Rita, thanks to you and your, the teams at both the buildings, great work. So we're recommending, Jim, that you approve that.
Yes.
Recommendation.
Do we have a motion, please?
To adopt the textbook requests as presented.
Second.
Any further comments, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda, the final amended school calendar for 2017, 2018. That's this year, we're almost at the end, but we have one final amendment.
That just represents the actual school calendar for this year with an emergency day used.
Nasty snow day that we had to all adjust for, so with that, can we have a motion, please?
Move to approve the final 2017, 18 school calendar.
Second.
Any further comments, concerns? Okay, roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have mobile makers EDU license for LHS and we discussed this in committee, but just a brief overview maybe?
Sure, this represents the agreement to license materials developed for the mobile makers class. The high quality curriculum materials are used by a number of schools to offer an app development class. It includes materials for student use and for teacher professional development. Accessible online or an accessible app development program for students.
Okay, I believe we need a motion.
Move to approve the mobile makers EDU license for LHS for 2018 and 19.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? Again, this was reviewed in, in committee. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Okay, that passes as well. Next on the agenda is a board policy workshop planned for June 11.
Yeah, basically Bryant has been working with council over the course of the year to identify specifically board policies that you must make decisions on as opposed to those that you can cede or assign to me as the CEO of the, of the district or the administrators in the district, and he's done a really nice job with that. We've also talked about having Lynn Heims come in and work with us as part of a board policy workshop. So we set a tentative date up simply because several of you were available. And so if you will check your calendars, everyone is available on Monday, June 11th and that would typically be in a normal month when we would have our committee meetings. Remember in June and July, we're, we do those meetings in sequence on the same night, usually the fourth Monday of the month. So you can let me know, we already have Lynn scheduled, Bryant's already ready to go, probably looking at, you know, a couple hours ish. We could go whenever you want to go, if you want to go earlier because it's whenever you all can make it here from work and your obligations at home. So if you want to go earlier that night at six?
I go early.
Six? Okay, so we'll work with Lynn and make, make six happen there, okay? And if you can't make it, just let me know and we'll see, you know, what we can do there. Certainly Bryant can spend time with you individually, if we need to follow up with Lynn, we can do that too, okay? All right, great.
I think it's a, a great timing. I think we, with Lisa coming on board and with so many policies that were updated within the last six to eight months, I would say had a number of them, I think it's just a good refresher for all of us, so.
Well, and I think too, you know, one of the things we've talked about is just to do election law review on that too. And so that will certainly be, you know, you know, a part of the evening and a part of that conversation that night. So we can wrap all of that up at one time, so that would be good.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is a second reading and adoption for Board Policy 6, colon, 310, credit for alternative courses and programs and course substitutions. This is some adjustment for, well, I'll let Bryant take it.
So this allows for, to expand the, those that are participating, interscholastic or extracurricular athletic programs. Currently, our current policy is for 11th and 12th graders and this policy allows us to expand to include 10th graders or sophomores.
All right, for the second reading, can we have a motion, please?
To adopt the board policy, having yet second read and adoption of Policy 6, 310, credit for alternative courses and programs and course substitution.
I second.
Okay, any, any further questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes and we have one more. We have a educational support staff retirement. That was not on the consent agenda.
Came in after.
Yeah, just.
So it came in after the, our last one, so Marla Sander has asked to, Sandler had asked to retire at the effective 8/2 of 2018.
So I move to accept the retirement as it's stated.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Anybody have anything under the category other? Okay, that concludes, almost said the wrong thing, Program and Personnel Committee.
All right.
So used to doing the other.
Good job. Facilities and Finance, Chairperson Luce.
All right, first thing on the agenda is resolution and authorizing and directing the transfer of interest from the debt service fund to the education fund, Mr. Stanley.
Yeah, so as talked about in committee, there's really two resolutions, two different ones that look very similar. The debt service fund and the working cash fund generate interest throughout the year and so it's wise practice to, at the end of the year, transfer the interest into the fund most in need. If you don't transfer the interest, then that money turns into the principal balance of that fund and it restricts the use of that money significantly more. And so at this point, the education fund is the fund that would need those funds. And so this will, for this resolution, we'll do about $20,203 plus whatever interest we earn in May and June because those months aren't done yet and so we'll do that transfer at the end of the fiscal year.
But this authorizes that to happen as well?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion on this item?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All righty, any discussion, questions? Roll call, did I do that correctly?
You're doing great.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. No, motion carries. There you go. Thank you, thank you, President. Second item, also Mr. Stanley, resolution authorizing and directing the transfer of interest from the working cash fund to the education fund.
Same, same idea except this time the amount to transfer the interest those generated working cash fund through the end of April is $27,113.48 plus whatever we earned in those, in that fund in May and June as well.
Do I have a resolution to, what am I looking for? Resolution to.
I move to transfer the interest.
Authorize, to approve this as it is.
I, I move to transfer the interest from working cash to the education fund.
Second.
All right, roll call, please. Oh, no, discussion or questions? There are none, roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, third item.
Very good.
Oh, the, the motion carries.
You're getting it.
And you've had a lot of practice tonight, Scott.
He's not done yet.
Not done yet, been on a plane a long time.
He's had a long day.
All right, third item, you're, you're killing us now, Dan Stanley. Third item.
Should've seen the committee.
Res- a resolution establishing a capitalization threshold for the district's accounting purposes.
Yeah, we currently have a capitalization threshold of $1,000. I'm recommending that we increase that threshold to $10,000 effective July 1st of 2018. Essentially, anything that, any, any item or group of items that are meant really to be together, anything that we buy that's over $1,000, right now we have to put on a list and the auditors have to review that list and we depreciate that over a period of five years on our CAFR, in my opinion, and several others, that's a very low threshold. The GFOA, the Government Financer, Finance Officers Association recommends a threshold of at least or no less than 5,000, but due to our size, I would recommend 10,000 and so it will significantly reduce the number of items that we're having to depreciate over time. And it'll make our audit more simple, it'll make some of our record keeping more simple.
All right, do I have a motion to approve this item?
I move to increase the capitalization threshold from 1,000 to $10,000 effective July 1.
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
We had already forecasted that in committee, just.
Kevin. Thank you, Jim.
1,000, why only 10? Why not 25? I mean, we're a huge organization. I mean, again, I think the public really understands more expensing the item when you buy it, which means anything under $25,000 or in the case of the motion is presented, anything under 10, we expense immediately, anything over 10, we're going to depreciate over a period of three, five, seven, 40, whatever the number, that's harder for the public to understand. Why not, if we're going to make a motion, is it unheard of to go that high in your experience?
Based on districts of our size, I don't see many of them higher than 10,000. They certainly may be there, but that's a more common number for larger districts based on what I've seen. You certainly can go higher, just 10,000 is just kind of a, a more common number to see amongst some bigger districts.
My question, please reply to this at all, I just don't understand it.
Right, yeah, the council are going to make this happen, but. I think 10's fine, I mean, we're going 10 times what we have now, right? So it's a nice starting point, we can potentially revisit it later on in life if we so choose, but if this would make your life easier, sounds, it's the right thing to do, it makes the public understand the financials better as well, so.
It sounds like you're going 10 because the rest of the schools are going to 10. If we weren't following the role of some of our comparables, would you propose going higher than that?
I wouldn't at this time. There's, there's a significant difference between 1,000 and even 5,000. So even 5,000 would be a major improvement, 5 to 10,000, there's not a whole lot of things you buy that are kind of in that range, so really the 10,000 gets a lot, it's the trucks, it's, you know, the big servers or not server cost that much, but it gets the really big things or any capital project we do, it's going to capture all of that. So really at the end of the day, you're still going to probably end up capitalizing a similar dollar amount, but the number of items is going to be significantly less because we're not going to capitalize every single laptop that costs over $1,000, that kind of a thing.
And you're saying increase it further wouldn't significantly increase or reduce that work further?
No, no, the, the, the amount of items that will go down going from 1,000 to 10,000 is huge, going from 10,000 to 25, not a big, not a big change.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Can we have a roll call on this motion?
Luce.
Aye. Wait, hold on, do you have, okay. Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Motion passes. On to the next one. Vernon Hills High School copiers contract.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking to replace two, we have two Xerox machines that are reaching their end of useful life in this building and so we would like to replace them to similar, similar machines but from Canon. We don't actually have the verbiage of the contract because the attorney is still reviewing it, so what I would recommend that we request is potentially an action or an approval authorizing the superintendent to enter into a five year lease with Canon to replace these two copiers pending our attorney, our attorney review. That's kind of really what we're waiting on at this point.
So you would be taking a contingent vote, it would be contingent upon council getting back and saying it's okay and if they say it's not okay, then we're not going to enter it into the contract. So that will allow us just to keep moving forward and get John's copiers and get them in here and, you know, get them ready to go.
We need a five year contract?
And they do need them.
It's a five year lease and so it, and we'll, we'll, we'll realize a significant savings, at least $10,000 a year, probably as much as 20,000, depending on what the final terms. Yeah.
All right, so. So would you be okay with that? I guess that, that's the question.
I'm, I'm fine with it, so I'll, I'll word it this way and you correct me if you think it's wrong, but do I have a proposal to move forward with Vernon Hills High School copiers contract contingent on legal looking at this and reviewing it?
So moved.
You want to flex that?
I would just clarify that it's a, approving, authorizing the enter into a five year lease with Canon to replace these machines.
Okay, so let me rephrase it. Do I have a motion to move forward with Vernon Hills High School copiers contract on a five year lease with Canon pending legal approval of the contract?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or any other questions? Roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye. And the motion passes. Okay, we continue. The next item on here is renewal of the Libertyville High School Student Activities Coca-Cola contract.
It's the contract we discussed in committee, no changes to what it is, it's essentially a renewal of the existing contract that they've been having with since the five year renewal.
And just, again, for the public that may be watching, both our high schools have sublease contracts, and at the time, those contracts are up for renewal, there's some pretty intense competition usually for those contracts, you know, vendor A wants to continue to be vendor A, and vendor B would like to be, you know, the new vendor for the school, so it generally comes down to Coke and Pepsi generally, speaking, so this is just a kind of renewal of that agreement, and there's some substantial cash as part of the agreement with the schools and the buildings, use that money directly for kids in the building, so that's what we're really looking at here, and John, I think yours has been a year or two, I think, right?
Yeah, we had a five-year deal when I started, so we have a little more year on.
Yeah, so we'll be coming back to you next year with, with John and Vernon Hills, so.
All right, well, do I have a motion regarding the renewal of the LHS Student Activities Coca-Cola Contract?
So moved.
Second. All righty, any other questions or discussions?
How long is it for again?
Pledges.
Questions? Uh, row call please.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
It passes. Going down the list, renewal of the Vernon Hills High School Yearbook Photography Services Contract.
Uh, since, in a similar vein to the Coca-Cola, any contract that's generated, that's, that's intended to generate more than a thousand dollars of revenue for the district or for students, it requires board approval, and so this is an example of one of those contracts, the IP is the, the current provider, and they're very happy with it, and so there's, there's revenue there, and that's a contract that we reviewed in committee as well.
How long is that again?
Uh, this one is just for one year.
How long is LHS?
I'm sorry?
So this one's one year, correct?
Correct, for Vernon Hills High School.
Hey, do I have a motion regarding the renewal of the Vernon Hills High School Yearbook Photography Services Contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or further questions? Uh, row call please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
And Thurman.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. G, Schools Treasurer Bond Renewal.
Um, essentially, you appointed me as treasurer, and I'm happy to continue, to continue serving as such, however it requires that, we, I have to be bonded for that, and the, the resolution essentially that is presented to us by the regional office, it really looks like this is something the board is approving on an annual basis, so we'd rather be more safe than sorry, bring this to you based on their language and have you approve the bonding, essentially, for it.
Okay, do I have a motion regarding the school treasurer's bond renewal and approval?
So moved. Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Row call please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Motion passes. H, Renewal of Landscape Maintenance Contract.
This is a renewal with our current provider, one, a one-year renewal, really for this season, the 2018 growing season, it's a price of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, which is a 1.5% increase over the prior season.
All right, Dan, I think we could say they're probably earning every penny plus more this spring.
Maybe, the, the rain means you can't cut grasses as much, so.
It makes it harder to cut the grass.
They were cutting the grass today while it was raining.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to cut grass.
They were working hard today.
Yeah, it's hard to cut grass.
We're actively managing that.
So do I have a motion for the renewal of Landscape Maintenance?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any other discussions or questions? Row call please.
Essel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Motion passes. I, bid awards, we have two, LHS Stadium North Fence Replacement, Vernon Hills High School Carpet Replacement.
Uh, so part of our list is replace the north fence at the LHS Stadium, and it's about six hundred and forty linear square foot, so we, we bid that out, because we were estimating that the cost would be around fifty thousand, and that's the threshold to bid on a project like that. We had three contractors attend the pre-bid meeting, and we received three bids, the low bid was Pro Fence Two Incorporated with a bid of fifty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars, they confirmed their bid and everything seems to be all in shape for that, so we would recommend the board approve, or accept the bid from Pro Fence Two Incorporated for the amount of two, fifty-two thousand dollars, eight hundred, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars for the north fence replacement at LHS Stadium.
Do we vote on these separately, or can we?
Separate, separate.
All right, so, do I have a motion regarding the, accepting the bid for the LHS Stadium?
I move that the Board of Education accept the bid from Pro Fence Two Incorporated in Wheeling, Illinois, in the amount of fifty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars for the Libertyville High School Stadium North Fence Replacement Project.
Second.
All right, any other discussion or questions? Row call please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman. Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Motion approved. All right, now, the Vernon Hills High School Carpet Replacement.
Sorry for all the things, we just don't want you to think that we're just not doing anything, you know, we're.
Well, actually, I told Jim he may be, you know, tonight, he is certainly the smartest person in the room, because he changed chairman.
I want to go on the record in front of the camera that I believe this is a conspiracy just to mess with me.
I am telling you, this is the longest affidavit report we've ever had.
And I think Kevin Huber's behind the conspiracy.
Just for the, for the camera.
So, we are at the point of replacing the carpeting at the Vernon Hills, so as you walk out, maybe you'll take a look, and so there's a, there's an attachment that was included that shows you the areas that we're looking to affect, this, it is a bid that we're approving, this is already nationally bid pre-pricing through Shaw Industries, and so the amount that came in is for ninety-seven thousand, twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents for the Vernon Hills Carpet Replacement, we would recommend that approval.
And Dan, just to point out again, we're doing, we're doing squares, right?
Carpet top.
Doing a combination of, we're doing a combination of them, I think the vast majority is the carpet squares, but there's gonna be some luxury vinyl tile as well.
But it's not roll carpet, is the point?
No, absolutely not.
So you could replace things that they stain or, squares?
Correct.
So do I have a motion to approve the Vernon Hills High School Carpet Replacement?
I move that Board of Education accept a proposal from Shaw Industries Incorporated Carpet Street, Georgia, in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents for the Vernon Hills Carpet Replacement Project.
Second.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one. We, we talked, yeah, no, we talked about Vernon Hills, obviously, we're totally, we've talked about some capex in the future.
I'm sorry, some what?
Capital expenditures, and specifically in this area, I believe, we talked about expanding the cafeteria and making the facilities a little bit more, unless it's more useful to the students, as opposed to them eating hot dogs each other. So, would this impact, are we putting carpet down where that will be ripped up a little later?
That's exactly my same question, would we be, if we prove to go ahead and do the classrooms, cafeteria are gonna be like, wow, we should've waited a year, because now we have to tear this up?
Uh, yeah, that's a good question, somebody smarter can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, the biggest area that they were concerned with was near the pool and the lockers area, that is gonna be held off for now, until that, there is some area that potentially could be affected by the cafeteria expansion, but we're still very early on in that planning process, and the amount that would be affected.
The minimums that would be significant.
Probably be pretty minor.
Okay.
Especially with the carpet, it's found, the marker is sure, it's, I think, last.
Well, and then the other question, I would, you know, and this is all dependent on what that capital spend or what the project would be, but could you use the same pattern?
Right. What, what? That's true, and then, remember with the cafeteria, because it is a good question, because we don't wanna do work around the cafeteria, let's say the cafeteria expansion was going the other way, which we would never have it do, but let's just say for argument's sake, let's say we were going, expanding the cafeteria into the foyer.
Right, right.
Right, then it would be not very smart for us to say, oh, well, let's go put some new carpet squares down there and some vinyl flooring, oops, we gotta tear it up when we expand the cafeteria. So going out into the courtyard and, and kind of, you know, reconfiguring the service lines, which we're looking at right now, you know, really precludes that, but I think we could say, I, and I'm looking at Dan and John, I think we could say that we would be very cautious, and we certainly understand that as our planning goes, if it looks like, you know, we're gonna duplicate effort, and we have to come back and possibly tear some stuff out and then put it back in, you know, we're gonna do everything within our power for that not to happen, because we understand the value of those dollars, okay? I think, I, and I'm absolutely certain that that's, you know, we'll be very cautious about that.
And, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, did Mark address this at the committee meeting?
He did.
We did cover this, so that's a, a good question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was not the committee meeting. What is the status, again, we know Vernon Hills had some, and John took us around and showed us what was needed, and I think we all really agreed immediately that we gotta fix this cafeteria issue with the kids and make, make it better, what, what is the status of, was that talked about at the committee meeting?
Yeah, Mark updated his on the plans and, you know, rough timeline on when he'll actually move things ahead, I think at the end of the day, it's kinda like by November, December.
Could that, that be potentially, so being out to bid for the whole project would?
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna bite off the cafeteria right now, try to get it done, so the kids come back and have a better facility or something.
That would be next summer.
Yeah, that's not possible to do at this time. Okay, very good, no, no.
That was impossible from the start.
Thank you, I, I, again, I know it was such a need, I didn't know.
Depending on the timing of everything.
Yeah, the priority would be get the cafeteria done for next summer, for the, for the start of school, and they'll, they'll stage it and schedule it around with whatever else may be going on.
Sorry, again, my apologies.
No, no, questions, those are your questions. Any other discussion or questions? Do we have a motion, do we have a motion? Anything else? Row call please.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right.
Scott.
Anything else?
One, one other thing, again, just for the public, we, we periodically like to remind the public, we've covered an awful lot of business tonight in program and personnel and facilities and finance, and the board does the majority of its work on the issues at our committee meetings, so what you're seeing is kind of the result of that work, the result of those discussions, the result of those questions asked, and you've got a little flavor this evening for the type of questions that we may go into, but that's where the board does its in-depth work, so if you want to actually view that work going on and listen to that work going on, and as always, we would encourage you to come to either of the committee meetings, because again, this is a summation of the good work that the board does in oversight and in working with the district and building administration in terms of making recommendations and decisions, so it's just important, that's why we remind people, that's where we do, you know, the, you know, and share our detailed work.
I'd like to add something, I would like to congratulate my colleague Scott on his chairmanship, and we'd love to applaud your trial by fire this evening.
I'd like to thank Dr. Rudy for that as well. Anything else, thank you, man.
Great job.
I don't believe, so there's nothing, no other, and I don't think we have anything in property.
All right, so, Seattle.
So SEDOL, that time of year again, for the budget to be approved by another district, and I was not able to go to the budget presentations, but I did, we'll take it with Dan, anything? I mean, there's a couple little things I've noted, one has to do with the tuition that we are charging, it's going up significantly, can I explain that, or, I mean, there's a very defined.
Yeah, essentially, I think, I could be wrong, but we're looking at about a total increase from, for SEDOL of about four percent, that's two parts, one is just tuition rates, is tuition rates just increasing, they're increasing, the recommendation from the administration, what is presented for the SEDOL board is a three percent increase in tuition rates, which is not terrible considering their history, it's been anywhere from three to five percent the last several years, go beyond that and you're in, they're, they've had double-digit increases beyond the last few years, so that, my sense of the three percent seems reasonable in terms of that, it still makes a fair point of the whole, you know, if long-term of our revenues keep only going up by CPI, that's something that, that it can't be sustainable for the long term, but at least at this point, it looks reasonable. The other big component is they had, they, my counterpart over there, they went through and reorganized the tuition rates per the different programs, since she has been there, which I know has got to be at least ten years, they basically had the tuition rates for all the various programs you could be in, and they've just been increasing as the rates have been going up, and what they decided to do was go back, reset all those tuition rates to really closely align to the actual costs of those programs, because that changes over time, and so they reset those rates, which is needed and is more fair, that did impact us some, it impacted other districts in different ways, it depends on the students you have and the needs of those students, and so that happened to impact us probably another one percent on the overall change, but that's really where we're at.
So what is four percent, or is that?
Um, the total, I think the total we're gonna be giving to SEDOL is about 1.8 million next year.
Four percent up on that?
1.8 is 1.769.
Yeah, so 17 something, up to 1.8.